Thank you. I'll call the meeting of the special meeting of the Oak School Board to order Thursday, September seventeenth, two thousand and twenty at eight forty-five P M in the Oaks Conference Room and via Zoom. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So here in the conference room, we have Rosendahl, Schmitz, Nagel, and Mehl, as well as Superintendent Steinkopf and Perry Haugen. Board member Thorpe is joining us by Zoom as well as Brennan Hack. April Herring is joining us by Zoom, Jenny Dill, Sire, Krista Dobitz, Tiffany. Do we know who Tiffany is?
Tiffany Hare.
Tiffany Hare. And that's it for now. So thank you for joining us. Our action items tonight, the first one is outdoor activities attendance. Who would like to start? I guess what we learned yesterday is from what, from what I've heard is, at least my personal contact with Lisbon is that they are not restricting entrance into football games. Because their outdoor activities.
As is, as is Sergeant County, as is Edgley. I talked to both them.
Edgley is restricting. I talked to Morgan this morning and I have their plan.
How are they restricting?
I can, I don't know if I can share my screen or not. I have a whole bunch of stuff from a bunch of different ones. I don't know.
Be able to. I opened it up.
Okay, so Morgan Schwarzenberger, who's their A D confirmed to me via email this morning that they are following this. Let's see if I'm doing it right here or not. Click the button. I'm not sure if it is or not, though.
Are you using Google Chrome?
Yeah. I'm assuming you just see me now still.
Yep.
Yeah, it says I'm not able to show the contents of my screen.
Can you give us the highlights of what it says? And are you speaking specifically of Edgley? Because that's a three-school co-op. And I know they've got Edgley, Cullum, and Ellendale. And I looked, they had home games scheduled at each of the three.
Yeah, so he had told me Edgley and Cullum. I don't know about Ellendale. I did not hear back from them. Maybe I can link in the chat if that's easier too, but I don't know if it's going to work or not. I can just read it. It says spectators are asked to socially distance and the capacity limit in all venues will be limited to no more than five hundred spectators or the venue capacity of seventy-five percent occupancy. That, that was from their A D this morning.
How do they calculate their occupancy? Do you know?
I don't know. I would assume that they're just going off that five hundred number as we were before.
And how, how would we determine, what would we say our capacity is at Cummings Field?
I don't know. That's a good question.
You said it said five hundred or seventy-five percent of capacity, not that. So in other words, it could be larger than five hundred.
It, it could be. He had, he had told me this morning five hundred was their number. I, I can just email my document here. Maybe that would be the easiest.
I'm trying to open it here, Brennan. Indoor. I'm just making love with what I've talked to.
No, that's, that's fine. I was just sharing what I had.
Yep, that says indoor seating. Indoor seating does that, which we haven't. We're not talking indoor. I want to show you something. You guys can find this on the N D H S A Guidelines and Recommendations for Opening Sports and Activities. It's pages three and four. I didn't have time to make copies. But you've got it. It's the guidelines that came out. If you look at three and top of four, top of page four says the N D H S A encourages conferences, districts, and/or regions of schools to consider agreeing to similar attendance policies across the conference district region to avoid confusion and for fans. Right there. The confusion is I've talked to fans and no one else is ticketing. No one else is really limiting attendance.
And specifically talking about
Outdoor. This is just outdoor. Everyone's agreeing on indoor. That's not even an issue. The people I talked to and called Edgley said they've actually eliminated leechers and encouraged people because of column how it's set up, you can back in around it with your vehicles, kind of like they do with Windy. If you remember that a couple of years ago. So you have the whole area and you're having pods of people shrouded. They get lawn chairs, they get vehicles. And they, that's how they do it. And I've talked and said, because when Carrington played, the first game there was Carrington at Cull for Edgley at home. There was left tape. And I'm not saying that's just what they do. They're, they're set up a little differently. They eliminated leechers and asked people to use vehicles. And you can see it in the, if you watch the Carrington game, that's on the back. That's what I was told tonight and I talked to several other people that go there, but they're not being limited. They're not, they've never turned anyone away from the game. But I'm just going off of what this says. We should be in accordance with the region one. The rest of the schools, I think we should be in accordance with them because we're the only ones right now that are ticketing. When I've talked to the other schools.
Okay, what I saw on Lisbon's website yesterday was that they are not limiting fans. I spoke to a member of their school board that I know and he said that that simply they aren't limiting. And I've never been to a football game in their facility. He said they have two different, there's two different entrances. So he was sure that they weren't calling back and forth and counting, so. And we know Thompson is also in region one, but they're different because they are in Grantworks County and it is a, and they were in yellow when we were up there, so. I guess I'm looking for a proposal that we can start specifically discussing and, and get feedback from each person.
And also there will be additional facilities for bathrooms. There will be three sets. They'll be here tomorrow about one o'clock. And that's, we're talking about another set in the west side, probably two in the south side. Again, that's actually been talked about crowding with only one set of bathrooms. We're now eliminating that portion of two.
And where are we at with concessions? There will be none?
There will be none at the So we're spreading out rather than one restroom area. We're going to have four, which no other Thompson we saw didn't even have, you know, one set.
All right, board members, what, what, what does somebody want to propose? Because we have, we have guidelines that we have adopted and so we are, we are, we are, if we make a change, we're making an amendment to our restart plan. Because we, we just did this on Tuesday morning and
I'd like to know why we did not know that other towns weren't taking attendance. That should be something we should have been advised of.
I looked on Lisbon's website a week or so ago and I did not see anything published. I had been looking at Thompson's. I saw, you know, I saw what they published, but it wasn't very clear unless they had gone to yellow. I I don't know if Lisbon didn't have anything posted earlier or not, but I think what we need to do is decide what, what do we want to do?
You don't want to read it? I'll read it one more time. It basically says this is the N D H S Guidelines and Recommendations, top of page four. They encourage conferences, districts, and/or regions of schools to consider agreeing to similar attendance policies across the conference district region to avoid confusion. My confusion came across five fifteen last night when I was called by Gwynn saying, why are you ticketing and no one else is?
So what is your, what is your proposal? I'd like to have
My proposal is we fall in line with the rest of region one, because that's what we've done from the start, whether it be region three volleyball, region one football. We're not trying to, we're not breaking code here. We're not breaking precedent. We're staying in lines and we're not confusing fans. We didn't know this. I was kind of thinking last week, I was waiting for tickets from Thompson, because I'm going to, we started talking about this. I have a question. Why didn't you know the other people? I mean, are we supposed to, as a school board, lose ourselves? Call them and find out who's ticketing is not? That's my question. Why weren't we advised that Gwynn is not taking attendance? Lisbon's not. Central or their gas is taking a document because they've already played. The people went up there and said they're not limiting attendance. They're actually logging people in so they can track who's there. I don't know. I'm going to talk. It's going to get boring. That's my question. Why weren't we advised of this, that the rest of the region wasn't doing the attendance? We weren't advised that. We were thought everyone was doing the five hundred and that's not true. That's what we were advised in the email. Well, I, I guess I can speak to it. Did I didn't reach out to you, Bill Superintendent, to ask that question? The, the guidance that we had up until last Thursday before North Dakota High Sports Association Board met and changed. That's when it switched and I guess I didn't reach out to anybody between that time and later on adapt, you know, switches in region one from schools. And then we met at, when, when we discussed that this week, Tuesday. So Brennan, do you have any? Yeah. You ended the meeting on Monday when Matt Fetch reviewed it with all other basically activity directors across the state, which was just this Monday.
Correct. Yep.
Yep.
Yep, and I'm not sure if the question is directed at me or not. I guess my response would be, my focus has been our restart plan and I haven't put a whole lot of time into, you know, checking throughout all of the other restart plans in our area prior to last night. Nor should I think that I should be expected to, to have every restart plan in our entire area, you know, memorized and checked into either.
With sporting events, I expect that.
Because I guess I would disagree that my job is to be the person to go to for our sporting events and not Lisbon's prior to the role change.
Brennan, you sent out a very direct email September fourth, sticking that if we whenever we pass the five hundred, we could be jeopardizing even being part of the N D H S A and we could jeopardize being in regular seasons. Am I to understand that we should be region champs right now because the other schools disregarded that?
I, my response to that would be on September fourth, when I sent that, the guidelines were different than what they currently are. So once again, I can't speak to the other schools. I can only speak to our school.
Tuesday, September eighth, I called the High School Association. I was confused. I was getting different information, called Valley City and talked to Brian up there. Oh, I don't remember his last name.
Booback, yep.
And Brian said, I told him, I said, hey, we, we had our first football game. We loaded to the five hundred people total, not fans. And he goes, I'm not sure where you're getting that. That's not what we advised. We said every local, it's up to a local decision on each board. And then I kind of brought that back. Okay, and I'm not arguing on the five hundred, but we were told, don't push this limit. And he said, we never told you that. We've never told our local boards that. We advised them to take it under, they had to make each plan for each location. And it seems to us that Oaks is the only one doing this on region one. That's what we're seeing. My question is how? We should have advised, hey, you know, I, I think we should reach out to other schools. When it says right there, similar attendance policies across conference district regions to avoid confusion from fans. It's right there. I think that's something we do need to reach out to other schools because we weren't getting ticket requests from Thompson. We turned people away from our own school from Hat and Northwood. They drove down and I suppose they were confused because that wasn't part of their school district. And that's when I got the calls from some Gwynn people saying, why are you only getting four tickets? You're the only school doing this in region one. I, I really think that's something we do need to look into in this situation. Brennan, you don't need to do the restart plan for our sergeant, but when it comes to fans going to and from games as an athletic director, we want to be on the same page as the rest of the people in region one. You, you've talked about, talked about region one, region three. This is, I think, a big part of it. I'm tired of talking. I need some help from some board members. This is really frustrating that we didn't know that the other schools in region one football weren't ticketing. They weren't taking attendance.
Robert, on Tuesday when we met, you commented that I think you, the words you used were, well, that it's not enough. It won't be enough. Were you feeling at that time like we needed to have a less restrictive a less restrictive entrance policy?
When I was thinking at that time was, I think we were just using the five hundred number because it was in print and we were trying to get more people in. Trying not to go too far and that's, I would like more clarification too on what Bill was talking about. Did they, is Bill taught the information that he got? Is that from somebody else at the state that is giving Brennan different information? Or were we not presented a proper information? Is that going to make a big difference on how, where the five hundred came from for the outdoor activities and the information that we're presented showing how we're supposed to make decisions?
Brennan, do you agree that the document that Bill just read from, is that, is that guidance currently being provided by the state? The fact that the, the recommendation that regions follow similar policies?
I, I think that's in the return to competition guidelines, if I'm not mistaken, which that is the the document that was sent out. I, I would have to double check exactly. I would assume that's still in there because as of, was it either Thursday or Friday when that notice was sent out? The only change was made from the, this shall, you know, the shall was kind of the sticking point of we shall, you know, follow the large protocol gatherings and now it's the, the school shall determine that. You know, I, I think it's that same document. I would have to double check that, though.
And in your work today, you just, you mentioned that you had spoken to Edgley and they, they say they are limiting. Would, have you spoken to others? Lisbon, Sergeant County?
Yep, 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 you're correct. And those two are not limiting. I actually forwarded my document and I also forwarded the email from Morgan Schwarzenberger to Dr. Steinhoff. It should be in his email right now where he confirms that they are taking attend, or limiting attendance. I also reached out to, to essentially everybody else in our area and put my little notes. It's, it's not the prettiest thing. But he, he should have it in his email now of, of different plans and in short little snippets of what the, the other schools in our area are doing currently.
Okay, give me a minute.
Yep.
So Brennan, you're saying that the, prior to the change that they made on September tenth, it stated that we shall follow the North Dakota Smart Restart Large Gathering Protocol. Is that correct?
That, that was the term that they used, yes.
Thank you.
And that was, and now that we shall determine it via the school. I can't remember the exact.
Okay, Brennan, I got the, you should be able to see my screen now.
Yep.
So you want, you want to talk about this one and then I'll switch to the other one that you can talk about that one?
Yep, so this, this is just the one that I was checking with Morgan to clarify if they're, they're still following their guidelines that are, are listed in their plan there. And then the other one that I sent you, once again, it's not the, the prettiest thing that, that we've ever seen, but it, it's kind of got the I don't know if you want to call it little snippets or info or what exactly it is. Yep, that's the one.
Okay. Talk to this one. I can scroll for you.
Yep, yep. So I just kind of went school by school here. I talked to Matt Crane a few days ago and, and they're, you know, maybe not the best example to start with because they're in a little bit different situation right now. But he, he had just made mention that on Monday Kindred is expecting major changes to theirs. He didn't know what it was at that point. You know, because they, they've been closed down for a little bit here now. Central Chaos is limiting to five tickets per athlete up to five hundred. Bill's correct in the fact that I highlighted Lisbon and I guess I put Milner North Sergeant, it's Sergeant County now, that they are not limiting outdoor activities. I checked with Enderland just as an area in ours. They have their original document that was still following the guidelines from right away. Calvin Craft, their A D, basically said that they're not really limiting because to be honest, they aren't very good and they don't have very many people come to their games. So that was that. Richland, I talked to Spencer Tim as their athletic director. There says that they will determine attendance prior to each game based on the opposing roster. Once again, Richland is struggling to even have a team this year due to participation numbers. So they're kind of maybe not the best example either. Barnes County is in the yellow level. So that's the words that I took right off of their website. There is Edgley. I already talked to Morgan there. Oak Grove is limiting to a maximum of four hundred. That's right on their website. I linked their, their link there. Thompson, as you mentioned, they, they sent us their document. They, you know, obviously didn't follow that. And then I talked to Northern Cass's A D as well this morning. They were another one that chose to not limit attendance, but I think you guys kind of already talked about that. They're doing temp checks. Different things like that, taking pictures of the stands, I guess, to just kind of get an idea of where they're at. I emailed Carrington. She didn't respond to me at all, so I don't have any of their information. And then Kidder County is also limiting to a max of five hundred and they're using separate entrances and areas for the home and away teams. And then I linked their document that says that there as well, so. Once again, I, to me, I'll be honest, I don't care whatever we decide to do as far as outdoor attendance. I just collected some, some information here in our area, geographical area, I guess, to, to have a heads up of kind of what other schools are doing.
All right, so of region one schools, Lisbon is not limiting, Sergeant County is not limiting. Northern is not. And Edgley, Cullum is kind of
Just kind of the Thompson thing.
And Thompson's a different situation. I think we need to have something on the table here to discuss. What, what, what does Oaks want to do? And knowing that if our situation in our community changes, like everything, it could, this could change again, but what do we want to propose?
I will make a proposal and I'm looking at the North Dakota Smart Restart and it says, large indoor and outdoor gatherings are permitted if approved by community leaders and local health authority. Never in that statement does it limit capacity. Does it limit numbers? So I'm going to make a proposal that we open up our, our outdoor activities without limiting any attendance.
Nagel moves to eliminate the attendance limit for outdoor activities. Is that an accurate reflection of your motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Schmidt's second. All right, is there any discussion? Again, I, we've already touched on that we intend or we have ordered and will have additional outdoor toilet facilities. I would encourage signage with encouraging distancing, masking, publicity, not notifying, reminding the public of the streaming and audio broadcast options, video options, and encouraging them to stay home and enjoy if they are concerned about their own health. And to encourage that families that come to the game, come to watch the game and not just run in and out. On the other hand, if kids come and they're out on the practice field playing, I guess they're not, they're not in the facility. So we can't tell kids they can't be on the playground on Main Street because it's a public place, so. But I, I would just encourage that we continue to provide signage and encourage safe behavior and healthy responsibility. Also publicize that we don't, that we will not have any concessions there so that people know that in advance. Is there any other discussion? Robert, discussion?
Oh, yeah, I'm satisfied with the discussion so far.
Anyone else? All right. April, could you call the roll, please? Or I can do it. You're muted.
Oh, I can. Okay, you can call roll.
Okay, Nagel.
Yes.
Schmidt.
Yep.
Thorpe.
Yes.
Rosendahl.
Yes.
Mehl votes yes also. The motion passes and the amendment is approved. All right, the next item is the Starion Bank Track Complex contract. Some, some changes were proposed to us today. Dr. Steinhoff sent those out to us. I did go through them and I think this is an improvement. I still had a couple of issues. There's a couple typographical errors, but there was a couple of things that I should have just kind of chatted with you.
I'll get, I'll bring this, bring this up here.
Well, I suppose.
Brennan, it's not just you that have sharing struggles. Just letting you know. Think this is it. No, that's the way it works. Okay, I think this is it, Sonia.
I guess I have it in my sent items as well. Okay, so all of the references to soccer have been eliminated and it was changed to track and field complex. That's not up on the screen. That's the, I don't have the document in front of you, but I did notice that the changes do make it clear that we can name smaller projects up to five thousand dollars. Later in the document, under E, I said, the district seems to have the right to name other larger projects. But have to be pre-approved by Starion. And I, I thought maybe it would be wise to add some sort of language that says Starion will not unreasonably withhold. Or, or maybe, I, I don't know. What, what are everybody else's thoughts about that?
I'm with you. I was concerned that if we get someone to put up a, a new scoreboard. Locker room was a big one. And also we can put up like Lisbon has where you have the eight lanes and whose time scheme and where, you know, that's expensive piece of equipment. If someone wants to do it, eight twenty-five grand. And also we have to get approval. I have a hard time with that. Because if someone wants to, let's say it's a memorial. I'm guessing they're probably less inclined to say no versus, you know, another bank or another. Because if someone wants to, let's say it's a memorial, is it? I'm guessing they probably less inclined to say no versus, you know, another bank or another institution. I hate hamstringing. I hate putting limitations on the future boards. Because this is 20 years. That's other thing. At 20 years, it's 2,500 bucks a year. They're kind of having control and I I'd love, very thankful, starting gave the 50. That's not the point. But at the same time, if someone wants to come forward and if they, we have to raise money for a locker room and or the electronics, five grand is nothing.
Yeah, five, 5,000 isn't very much money for anything, actually. So does it have to be a dollar figure or can it be just any naming rights? It's up to us.
I don't know. So I I guess I'm not feeling like I'm ready to to sign off on this and I'm, I'm not sure if we if if we need to have this discussion. I don't know that we can solve this at this meeting tonight.
We, you're, you're okay with all the, it says Starion Track and Field Complex? And that they removed the word soccer and then are you okay with the other part two where there's a a piece in there that says no act of God and
That's a better document. There's still things we'd like to do.
Just this piece of, so is your preference for me to tell John that we don't want a dollar amount in there at all? On on naming rates or do you want something like it says here that's on your own started and she'll not unnecessarily withhold naming rates?
Unreasonably, but that's that's vague. I mean, it's not, I I didn't like it very much. I just
I I said, I hate the five years from now and we're all off the board and another board says, hey, we drink, we're getting 15 grand and also and I'm guessing they're a good company. They're a good bank. They're not, I wouldn't think they'd be reasonable, but we don't know. And I don't want to hamstring somebody else.
And a couple other things that I I noticed. There's reference to the NDHSAA rules and I don't know that anyone has delved into if I assume that this is all fine with NDHSAA, but I don't know that we have done the due diligence to determine that it is. And then there is a paragraph that refers to bankruptcy or reorganization on if the district goes bankrupt or reorganizes. Well, I I get what bankruptcy is and that's a financial term. But reorganization from the standpoint of a school district, there is reorganization. I mean, if if 10, 15, 20 years from now, we are combining with another neighboring school district or as I, as I implied in my email to Craig, who knows what in in this day of zooming education, what what does reorganization look like? I'm not sure that we were reorganization there. If if we were to reorganize, I don't think that should change anything with that field, but I'm not sure if that means if we, if we became Dickey County Schools or I guess that's not clear to me, what that means.
It's a better document, but I I'm still concerned about limiting our ability, the district's ability, not our, the district's ability to accept a gift. You know, if someone decides to leave us 25 grand, they want to put it towards a scoreboard and we have to ask approval for that. I don't like that. I just don't.
So I guess I'd like, I guess if Craig or someone can check around with some other schools that have these naming rights and see how that's been handled in their documents and you know, talk, talk to Josh because they got some big dollars up there for their
And a field that is.
And I
Again, it's, I'm very thankful to start and that's not the point. It's just, I don't want to, this is a 20 year deal too. If they want to lock it for 20, we have to be smart.
Let's be clear that, you know, we we want to grow that and we don't want to be limited and I don't think they would limit us, but we we have to have a document that says that.
So you you don't have a preference on a dollar amount necessarily?
I think I'd like to think about a little more, some type of language that
Okay.
Okay, do we need to show this to legal counsel on our behalf to make sure we're not missing something?
I think you're right there too. It's not at this time of money here.
It's legalese, I'm sorry.
It is.
Yeah, maybe check with Josh and see if he, if they have an attorney that they worked with on a doc, similar document and
Because I'm just thinking, what, okay, I'm taking a complete devil's advocate here that someone does another business counter and says they want to pledge 25,000 towards the locker room. If they say, no, you can't do that, does that mean they have to do it then? Then starting is on the hook for it. I mean, you can't be blocked from accepting that kind of donation and that seems like what could happen.
And and enhancing the facility for more uses is only beneficial to Starion because their their exposure grows with the more of it. So I I don't think they'd be unreasonable, but I don't, I don't have the right words to use.
I'm nerd to this too, but I just want to leave, just jump into it too quick without having everything right.
So more, more, more research.
Okay.
All right. That is the last item on our agenda and I just want to thank everybody for coming out tonight and for your continued patience and grace and as in this ever-changing situation we're in that none of us have dealt with. I I just, we we need to just stay on top of everything we can and do the best we can for our kids and our communities. So let's, let's try to pull together and make it the best we can. Meeting's adjourned at nine twenty one.